Okay, it is now 6:00 PM and we'll call the regular meeting of the Florence Planning and Zoning Commission to order on Thursday, October 6th. And Mari, would you do roll call please?
Commissioner Vanderstark?
Present.
Commissioner Kapalongo?
Present.
Commissioner Perrow will not be here. Vice Chair Adam?
Here.
Chairman Frost?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Everyone, please rise for the pledge allegiance. Kathy, would you lead us in that please?
Just to the flag of the United States of America and to the public who which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Recognize Councilmember Mendoza, who's the council liaison here with us this evening. We appreciate his attendance. Discussion, approval or disapproval or amendment of the minutes from the regular meeting on July 21st, 2022. Any comments, corrections, discussion? Done for me, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion from Commissioner Kapalongo on a second by Vice Chair Adam. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. New business 5A, presentation approval, approval with conditions or denial of a design review application, PZ-22-33 by D.R. Horton for new home elevations for lots in the Western Crossings Development located northeast of the intersection at Centennial Park Avenue and State Route 287. Mari Selahier, looks like you're ready to give us a presentation.
Yes. Good to be back in front of the podium. Western Crossings, two phases. You've seen the second phase come as a preliminary plat. The final plat hasn't been approved, but it's on the October 17th agenda, so that will be coming through. We did get the design review, so we decided to bring it through. The home builder will be D.R. Horton. This will be a total of 272 lots. The home builders offering 12 different floor plans. With each of those floor plans, there'll be three different elevations. All of these homes will be single-story and there'll be 16 different color schemes for the models. They did state that they will not have, or they will not build the same home or have the same elevation or color combination next door or across from one another, which is standard for design reviews when it comes to homes. This picture below just kind of gives us an example of what they're, of one of the designs that was found within their submittal. It's also in the staff report. These homes will vary in size from 1,270 square feet to 2,051 square feet, so more your basic model, nothing too large. These are smaller lots. Architectural projections will be part of it, such as pop-outs around your vents, your garages, doorways. You also have stone accents and veneers, decorative siding, and there will be recessed garages to emphasize the front, the porch of the living area. And we also have some styles where you have the door kind of more in the center and then some that have the door more on the side. But this also includes concrete tiling, which does diverge from the PUD a little because the PUD asks for asphalt shingles, but the tiling is definitely a step up, so that is kind of an allowance in terms of meeting the PUD and not. So this is, they have three different garage styles, which you can see on the right. So in the photos, a lot of them show the contemporary look, but they do have these different styles that homeowners can choose from when they pick their floor plan or their elevation. They also have multitude of colors. Oh, wrong one. So as I stated, 16 different color schemes. A lot of them are including tan, gray, red, brown, off-white, a lot of your standard more desert Arizona colors, but they do have accents of that blue, green, red and yellow, especially on the doors, just to give it a little bit more color and pop. And all these colors just help to give options and to help make that combination difference available to homeowners in the builder as they go through making these homes in the D.R. Horton did include a landscape package, two of them, and they're both for the front yard. Each of these packages includes at least one tree and six shrubs, as well as granite ground cover. There is no turf option in their layout. And staff has asked that when they do bring the landscape forward, that they meet the Penile County AMA Low Water Use Plant List, because that just is also standard within our community. The PUD doesn't have a plant list, but we just want to make sure it's all low water, same as we had with LGI's samples. So here's just a visual representation of what they're looking to do for their standard front yard practices. Straightforward, staff found this request in compliance and applicable with the town development codes, and it provides a quality place to live for the town of Florence. It's not copying any of the neighborhood next door, but it's also bringing some of that modern look, which is also found in the commercial area to the east. So Planning and Zoning Commission may approve, approve with conditions or deny this design review application. Staff did have some conditions within the staff report, and so if you move to approve, we wish that those conditions are included. With that, are there any questions?
Commission members, any questions for staff?
Maricel, can you? Sorry. For the record, so at least it's public, what are the recommendations from staff? Just figured it better to have it read into the record.
The conditions for the record, the design review approval shall expire in year from this approval date, so October 6th, 2023 is when this approval will expire if it is approved, and that approval, if a building permit is not issued for the subject construction within said period. Number two, the project shall comply with all applicable town codes, including but not limited to building fire and engineering code requirements. All utility boxes, backflow preventers and similar equipment shall be painted to match the surrounding buildings. And then compliance with this design review approval shall be required prior to the issuance of a file, certificate of occupancy, and any additional conditions deemed necessary by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question?
Please call.
My question is, is there going to be a wall surrounded the community on 287?
Yes, there are plans for a wall, as far as I know.
And do we have any say in that? Is a design presented to P and Z? Because I appreciate that they have 12 different designs for homes. I think that's wonderful and it's great, but what we see when we drive down 287 is that wall. And so are there any stipulations as to what that wall should look like?
No, walls are usually part of the overall landscaping and they haven't brought that wall design to us.
So that will come later?
That's coming later.
Thank you.
Any other comments from commissioners? I'll make just a few, and these are all very positive. I'll echo Vice Chair Adam's comment on the 12 different floor plans. I think that's very commendable to come in here with that. And they're all single-story, which I think is very nice for where this is located. The veneers that they're adding to these homes are upscale, which makes them look very nice. All the homes have eaves. There's a lot of builders right now that are putting in homes without eaves. To me, they look like manufactured homes without those eaves on them, so I appreciated that. The fact that they're going with roof tile instead of asphalt shingles, I think is great. So I saw lots of very positive things here, so they're to be committed and pass that on to them if you wish. Thank you.
I will.
With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve the design review for Western Crossing Homes, PZ-22-33, with the staff recommendations.
I'll second that.
I have a motion from Commissioner Adam and a second by Commissioner Vanderstark for approval. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Passes 4-0. Thank you. New business number 5A, presentation approval, approval with conditions or denial of a design review application for an Ace Hardware store in the Anthem Marketplace at 3449 North Hunt Highway, PZ-22-35. Mari Selahier, staff presentation, please.
Currently in the Anthem Marketplace, there is a large vacant parcel just to the, I would say just to the north of Valentino's Restaurant. It is currently vacant and Ace Hardware, the same franchise that owns the Ace Hardware down here in downtown, decided to purchase a lot to have their own Ruggerios Ace Hardware within the Anthem area. It's currently zoned as a PUD, but within the Anthem at Mail Ranch PUD, this whole area is Business Highway Commercial or B2. So the B2 zoning within the PUD does allow for the development of hardware shops, which is exactly what this is. Their overall site plan is for the one big 21,979 square foot retail building, single-story. There is also a proposed outdoor garden center, which is about 3,832 square feet. It incorporates some of the parking that's already on the parcel, but they will also be including parking on the northern part of it. So this is an elevation of what it will look like. Comparing this to what is currently within the marketplace, it fits in. The current Safeway does use brick, brown, a lot of the other stores as well, except maybe the McDonald's, which is more of a white. So it fits within the marketplace. They also asked the Evergreen, which is the company overseeing it, whether this design is in line with what they've asked, and Evergreen has approved. So this is just a side view. So as I said, they're looking to do the store and then the garden center. This will come to a 28 feet and eight inches tall building, which is well under the maximum height of 40 feet. The building does meet the setbacks of 25 feet in the front, 10 in the side and 10 in the rear. They don't really have a street side since they're within the marketplace. The design does include the brown and red bricks, and these match the other buildings, and they've also included a metal awning that not only provides shade, but also I think kind of gives a nice taste of what we have here in the downtown and what kind of Florence has when it comes to those awnings and those metal sheeting roofs. So the landscaping is currently vacant, so there is no landscaping other than within the parking lot, because that was just required when it first came in. The landscaping will be added around all parts of the building. The plants provide, meet the low water and PUD plant list, and they will also add light fixtures on the building that meet the existing development standards for minimize light spillage and shielding. The applicant will submit a signed package later. So this is just the landscape plan they have provided with us, so it completely surrounds the area. And something I do want to include that was in the staff report, but I didn't quite have here in the presentation, I said that we, the parking standard was 104 spaces, that there were 80-something spaces already there, and then they included the rest except for four spaces they needed. Now, those four spaces were supposed to go here on this front landscaped area, as I'm kind of circling on the presentation. Staff found if you put parking spaces there, especially ADA, which was their original plan, that that would impact traffic and there would definitely be a hardship when it comes to backing out, getting in and disruption of traffic overall. So we asked them to take out those four parking spaces and we would allow that since there is kind of already shared parking there between the Valentinos, the Safeway. We think it had enough to support the daily traffic that the Ace Hardware would see. And they also provided a traffic statement just to show that losing those four spaces would not impact traffic or accessibility in any way. So we asked just to have them landscape it and just add that enhancement. With that, staff found that this request was in compliant with not only the PUD, but also the town code, and we recommend approval of this design review with the conditions in the staff report, which I will read now, just for the record. So design review shall expire in one year from this approval date, October 6th, and if a building permit is not issued from the subject construction within said period, then they'll have to go through design review again. So no portion of the parking lot area can be used for storage or display of merchandise. If the sidewalk along the perimeter of the building will be used for any merchandise displays, it must allow for ADA public access at all times. The project shall comply with all applicable town codes, including but not limited to building fire and engineering codes and requirements, and then any additional conditions deemed necessary by Planning and Zoning Commission. With that, are there any questions?
Commissioners, any questions of staff?
I have a comment. I'd like to compliment Ruggerios. Since they've come to Florence, I know they've put a lot of work into their Ace Hardware on Main Street. I visit Coolidge quite often and I see quite an upgrade to that Ace Hardware as well, which has fallen on some hard times, so they really are improving their neighborhoods. And I think this is a tremendous addition to Anthem. I thank you for seeing the parking issue, because right now in the Safeway parking lot, I cannot believe children or golf carts have not been mowed over. It's a mess over there, so I'm glad you caught that. I'm also really pleased about the sidewalks being kept clear. If they want to haul merchandise out during the day, but they have to haul it back in so there's not hay bales all out on the sidewalk and ADA access, so I think this is terrific.
Commissioner?
This is something, I don't know if you're able to answer this. What is their intent with the current location? Are they going to keep both locations?
Yes, they plan to keep both locations, the one here in downtown and the one in Anthem.
Okay, no, because I didn't want to see it closed from here in downtown.
No, you're right.
But it's also interesting they're going to be competing with themselves, so.
They don't really see it as competing with themselves, because there's a following within the downtown.
Oh, understood, understood.
Then there's the, yeah.
Yeah, no, but I did not want to see them shutter that location.
As I understand, they own 11 Ace Hardwares, so I'm sure they did their business plan.
Probably.
And the good thing is, all money will still be going to the Ruggerios, either location.
Right.
And then also if someone does need the garden center from the downtown area, they can just go to Anthem and whatever they spend there still stays within Florence. They don't have to go up to Santaniden Avenue.
Right, no, but my, I guess my main concern was that they didn't, I didn't want to see downtown suffer for Anthem to do better. You know, I didn't want to see that happen, so.
No one does.
Mr. Vanderstark, any comments? And I will just echo the comments of my colleagues, and I think this is a great addition. I appreciate the work that they put into this nicely done site plan, nicely done storefront. I welcome this addition. Be a good addition to that part of the world. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
One last thing, do we have any idea when they plan on breaking ground? Has that come up?
Um, no, we don't. We know they do want to rock and roll soon as possible.
Okay.
But I don't know a specific date.
Thanks.
Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with staff recommendations.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Kapalongo and a second by Vice Chair Adam. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries 4-0 for approval. Thank you very much. Item 5C, presentation and discussion of proposed amendments to the Town of Florence Development Code, Chapter 150. And if I could, just out of footnote, looks like Harvey, you're going to be doing the honors on this one. I'd be interested to hear on a lot of these, what other municipalities are doing, if we are, have we talked to others and see what they're doing? If you can add any comments as you go through these various points, that would be appreciated. Just give us a little bit more background as to what some of our peers might be doing.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I'd be happy to do that, acknowledge. Chairman, Vice Chair and members of the Commission, just a little bit of background, I hope you can hear me. The, over the last several months, probably years, the staff has been collecting various amendment, possible amendments to the Development Code. This is Chapter 150 of the Development Code, of the Town Code, which deals with zoning and development. And I, the previous senior planner, Larry Harmon, had been collecting this along with Mari, so some of them are ones that we have personally been confronted with, with cases. Some have been brought by the Town Council, some have been brought to us by the Planning Commission. So I'm going to walk you through these, and this is purely for discussion tonight and getting your input, and once we have some consensus among the Commission, my intention would be that we have a joint work session with the Commission and the Council to discuss it, to make sure both bodies are on the same page before we move forward. And then, of course, there'd be posting on the social media and the necessary public hearing. So we're kind of a long way from getting it finalized, so this is just in the discussion phases, and there's some things that I am proposing based upon some things that I see are problems maybe in the future. They're maybe not a problem today, but they may be in the future, so that's the genesis for what we're doing here. Let me see. The first topic is medical and recreational marijuana. The laws have changed recently as there was a proposition that, first we had a proposition that approved this medical marijuana, and then recently we, we meaning the state of Arizona, whether you voted for or against it, that's not the issue, it is approved for recreational marijuana. And there's an inconsistency in our code. Well, let me give you a little bit of background on some of those. I don't know if you read Chapter 150, the Development Code, as often as I do and Mari do, does. It's not a, you know, it's good for bedtime reading, but there's a development tape, development use table at the beginning of that chapter. And so basically it has the commercial and industrial districts lined up, and then it has uses and whether it's permitted, not permitted, or a conditional use permit, so. And you have these tables, both in, at the beginning, and then each of the districts, there's a description of the districts with certain development standards, and then they have a list of permitted uses and conditional uses. So what I found was, and the staff has found, is sometimes there's conflicts. They're not, they're not in sync. Sometimes the use is listed in the table as permitted, maybe it's conditional in the body of the chapter, so we're trying to make sure, sync those two up to make sure they're consistent and what the intent of the code is. And there's various inconsistencies in that regard. So I talk about the table, I'm talking about the table at the beginning, and then there's a list of uses, so you get those two, there are two distinct differences in those, when I talk about those. So with that said, medical and recreational marijuana is allowed by right in the commercial and industrial districts in the table. But in the code itself, if you go to the B2 district, medical marijuana is required to have a CUP in the B2 district. So there's clearly an inconsistency between the table and the list, so there's two problems with that. First of all, when the guidelines that the state adopted when they approved the recreational marijuana, they basically said cities and towns cannot treat recreational marijuana more restrictive than medical marijuana. We have to treat them consistent. We can't put more stipulations or burdens on the recreational over the medical marijuana. So whatever we do, we have to, they have to be treated the same. So I'm proposing, the staff, when I say I'm, they're permitted in the B2 and the light and dust, or the light and heavy industrial district in the table, and then they would be not permitted in the B1 and the downtown commercial. Now, if the Commission sees it differently, please, please let me know and I'll make a note of that. But that's, that's the one, the one issue is I'm trying to sync those together to make, to make it permitted in the B2 district, treat recreational marijuana just like medical marijuana in the B2 district. So should we, should we go through everything or just wanted to discuss each one, Chairman, as we, okay?
I think we would be, I would appreciate doing one at a time, just get them as we're on them when our minds are fresh.
Okay. So there's no questions on that one, we go to, oh, there is a question?
Guys, I'm sorry, because I'm trying to follow this. First of all, do I understand that should we get a permit for Florence, right, that a facility could sell both recreational and medical marijuana in the same facility? So then it has to be in sync.
And that's, yes, and that's a good point, Vice Chair. In fact, when the state released the, when recreational marijuana became legal, a lot of the folks that had medical dispensaries already were in a much better position to get the recreational marijuana, so usually they're one in the same now. There's very few that just do recreational without the medical, so they are pretty much the same. They had a leg up once they got the medical marijuana, they, all of those facilities got to sell.
And I should know this, but would that allow a marijuana vendor on, in the historic district?
Well, Vice Chairman, Vice Chairman, what, I, in the downtown commercial, it would not be permitted.
It would not be permitted, okay, thank you.
It's done by zoning district, okay. My understanding is this is something that the Commission had expressed interest in changing.
Anything else?
See, another question? Go ahead.
No, I, well, I'm not as puritanical, I guess. I'd like to see it wherever we can do it. I think, you know, I don't, I, I would be fine with it being in downtown too. I mean, put it downtown, put it in Anthem, put it in Safeway, I don't care.
There you go.
You know, it's, you know.
I think when the smoke shop originally came in and they were looking at the Nichols Building, we were very positive towards that because they draw a lot of traffic, and that's what our downtown needs. And, you know, if you think we had the bottle shop for years and years right on Main Street, I don't know that there's a big difference, but I guess we'll address that if it happens to come up.
Yeah, that's, that's a whole other conversation, but alcohol and marijuana, so.
But am I, do I understand the consensus? You want to allow it by right in the downtown commercial area?
I, yeah, I would like to see it. We would agree as well. Yeah, right.
There it is.
So would you go, can we, maybe we need to pull up table and make sure.
And I guess that's something to discuss with Council, because I remember when the whole marijuana licensing thing came up, we wanted to streamline our guidelines and zoning so that should the county or the state, I forget who hands out the licenses, make it as easy as possible to get a vendor in town, because again, it's good tax revenue.
I think it, yes, Vice Chair, I think it is allowed now, because I think what I was trying to equalize was the table with the list, and it's required a CUP in the B2 district, but in the downtown? Could you, while we do that, we'll talk about tattoo establishments, kind of along the same line. Tattoo establishments are not, are not mentioned in the code. I guess they are permitted in the B2, which is the general, basically when I say highway commercial or general commercial, and in industrial district. Do we want to allow that in other districts, other commercial districts in the communities? And, you know, there was a time where tattoo was considered, you know, politically not correct, but it's definitely correct now, I mean, in today's environment.
Well, I'd just like to mention, there is such a thing as cosmetic tattooing today, right, for makeup. So to me, I don't know why we wouldn't allow that in a salon on Main Street.
Well, and to bring some background into this, we have had some members of the public who ask for tattoo parlors to be allowed in the downtown zoning. So this is why it ended up on our shopping list. And there have been a couple actually on Main Street who, who would support and come out and support that change.
Okay. So that, did you find?
I'm working on it.
Well, Mr. Kraus, why don't you, many of these items, I note on here that, that there's a comment that says staff recommends, staff suggests, on this item and the next couple of items, there's no reference to that. So I'd be interested to hear what professional staff feels on this, and also, this would be a good one to let us know what other municipalities are doing in this area.
Well, it's kind of a, in some ways, a value judgment. I mean, off, off-track betting, alcohol, tattoos, marijuana, and, and value, I, I mean, I, it depends on what the community desires. I mean, I personally, I mean, if, I don't have a problem with it, I, but I'm sort of, I guess, Commissioner Capellano's thinking, I'm kind of liberal in that regard, so.
More libertarian.
That's, yeah, libertarian, exactly, maybe that's it.
You know, I, I mean.
I don't see, I don't see an issue. I think what, I think Vice, Vice Chair Adams hit the nail on the head. I think what we really need to, we need to bring more people downtown. If the downtown's going to be successful, there's only two ways to do that. We have to have more events, bring more people downtown to stimulate activity downtown, have more businesses in it. And, and so to open it up for entertainment, for services, and the more we do that, the probably the, the community will, will grow from that. And, and it has, it'll have effect of changing image too. And reputation and image is important to the community, and it depends on what image and reputation the community wants as well.
And I would hope that we can avoid conditional use permits, because the people would be coming to our town are small business people, right? And it's very complicated, it prolongs the, you know, time when they can actually open. And so, again, anything we can do to streamline the process would be helpful.
It's also intimidating for some people, because they're not used to government, they're not used to this process, so they don't understand it, and so, I, I totally agree.
It's allowed.
It's allowed.
It's allowed in downtown commercial.
I think, I think marijuana and tattoos would be a draw for the downtown.
Definitely.
Just reading ahead, I'm vehemently, vehemently opposed to three and four.
Gotcha.
Vehemently opposed. And as, as the time comes to be more vocal about that, I will.
Just for clarification, the medical and the recreational marijuana would be allowed in the downtown commercial?
Yes.
Nice.
Moving on, off-track betting, that is not addressed in the code. Typically, that, you find that in bars and taverns, goes along with entertainment. Do we, do we want to permit that along with bars and taverns, off-track betting?
I would say no.
No?
No. That just, it caters to a certain, I'm particular about gamblers.
Okay.
Funny about that. And don't, wait till we get to the next one.
I'm sorry to bring these, they're sensitive subjects, I think, yes.
No, not at all, not at all. It's, I mean, it's, we're adults, we have to talk about this stuff.
I'm just trying to anticipate the public, the, the future, as we grow as a community, there's, there's going to be more interest in these uses. And when it's not addressed in the code, it leaves the staff and the Council and the Commission in a very bad position, because we don't know how to handle it. So it's better to be proactive, either make affirmative decision whether you want it or you don't want it, and where you want it and where you don't want it. That's, that's kind of what my opinion is.
No, absolutely. With, with off-track betting and the, the next item, those are guaranteed ways to drive your community into the gutter. Guaranteed ways. If, if you want, if you want to have a slum, that's the way you do it, so.
Can I ask, is there a difference in off-track betting from, I guess we allow sports betting now, is that what we're talking about? Is the same thing? Okay.
So how are other municipalities dealing with this?
Most of them allow it, most of them allow it. Very common.
It's revenue.
Very common.
Right?
Not the revenue you want.
I, no, I hear you, but that's why I'm thinking most towns.
Really not the revenue you want. And the next one should be outlawed on a federal level.
That's a very controversial one, too. So let's go, I see we got consensus on off-track betting, or do we? I think it's important that we probably, you know, you don't want to exclude a use if there's some, is there some area of town that it would be acceptable?
I've seen, I worked in addictions for almost a decade. I don't want to be partying to giving somebody the opportunity to gamble away their family's life savings. That's what that does, every time.
Any other comments on that one?
Didn't mean to put a damper on things, sorry. We can go back and talk about pot if you want, I'm fine with that.
No, I'm not for or against gambling, and I personally don't gamble, but I've just, it's, it's something that we need to think about.
I look at it, it's the same as if you're asking me if we want to put strip clubs in the downtown.
I didn't even go there, because I, I didn't want to even approach that subject.
No, no, but, but it's, 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 what's the image we want to send to the rest of the area?
Yeah.
Do we want to say, hey, Florence is someplace you want to live? Or do we want to say Florence is someplace where you can come and pistol your money away?
Okay.
Yeah, I think this is at odds with the image that we're trying to portray.
Then, you know, I bring this other one up, pawn shops and payday loan. I know that there are very much, a lot of communities have real issues with these, and there, there's actually state law, you know, the cities and towns in Arizona have got together and restricted some of their locations and use. But as a community grows, unfortunately, they will pop up and they take advantage. We talk about gambling problems, pawn shops and payday loans can, can really be a damper for a lot of, a lot of folks and a lot of problems. But not to allow them, if we get, we get an application for one, I'm just saying, we prob, what are we going to do with it? We just say, no, we're not going to allow them in Florence? I think.
I'm fine with that.
You're fine.
I, they're, they are, they are purely predatory in nature, and they prey on the weakest part of the socioeconomic sector, people who don't have, they're working minimum wage jobs, and they, they don't have the financial knowledge to not go to these places. They are completely predators, they're like drug dealers. You might as well put a meth dealer on the corner.
So we had a pawn shop on Main Street, and they had a sister pawn shop in Coolidge, and we had a lot of issues with stolen goods being switched between the two stores. So that would be my point, that we've already had experience, we know they take in stolen goods, and hard to catch.
That's true. Usually when there's a robbery or something like that, first place the police go, to a pawn shop and find stolen goods, not only in Florence, but they'll go to other pawn shops.
So what do we do with something like this? We're obviously, no one is, is a fan of this, but in, in the, we don't want to put you in a predicament with someday of having one of these proprietors come into you and say, here's an empty storefront, we would like to locate there, and you've got to be armed with something to be able to deal with this, right?
Yes, that's, that's exactly.
And is no, the proper reaction, can we say that, or would that just put the town in, in a position to have a lawsuit brought against us?
That's a possibility, that can, that's what concerns me, is that we just say, well, no, we don't allow that use in town. I, I don't know, I don't know that I'd have to get a legal opinion on that, but it, it puts the staff in a very difficult position, when, you know, we get a use, you say, well, we don't allow that. Well, the code is silent on it. So when it's silent, does that mean that, what does that mean? Does that mean, does it mean we don't want it? We didn't say affirmatively that we didn't want it. By, by, by putting it in one district, let's say, my, this is where I believe, you put it in the industrial district, you know, and we have very limited industrial property. You at least acknowledge that you've accepted that use, and that's where it goes. If you don't put it in any district, you leave, you leave yourselves more vulnerable to challenge legally. That's, that's my thinking, even with the off-track betting, put it in some district, you know, there's, there's probably, you know, the, the town has 67 square miles, and, you know, there's, there's one acre that it's allowed in. So, you know, you do the math.
Maybe, maybe we should bring, uh, Town Council, not Council, but actual legal Council in on this, and see just how bulletproof can we make that?
You under.
Oh, I understand what you're saying, right.
And by leaving it silent, you're, you keep, you, you put yourself in a vulnerable position.
Absolutely.
By putting it in a district that maybe have limited, limited opportunities, at least you're acknowledging the use, and this is where you think it ought to go. That's, that's my, that's my rec, if you want my professional recommendation, you just don't ignore these uses, you find a place to put them in town that is least objectionable.
And, and I absolutely appreciate and understand that. What I'm asking to see is if, if our legal counsel can tell us, if we could just ban it outright, we don't even have to play that game.
Well.
You know, I, I get it, I, I know exactly where you're coming from. You know, but to that end, I would add another, then let's add another, instead of an industrial area, let's put it in the marine area, so it can only be near a large body of water, which we don't have, and then we're fine. You see what I'm saying? I mean, I'd rather just be able to have the lawyer tell us, no, you can tell them no.
Sounds like it requires further discussion, and just for my awareness.
Well, I think the Chair made a good point about putting us in a bad position, and what I might recommend is we put it out in the industrial area only, and make it with a CUP.
Yeah.
And we could make it really hard for them to open, but we're not saying no.
If there's no stipulation, then legally, they can find a way in.
Because the issue you have is, is, we can do due diligence, and we can check their history, right? But these guys, they shut down and come back with another name, so you don't know if they're shady or not, right? But at least we can prolong it and make it as difficult as possible.
Just to, if they're going into that business, they're shady.
Okay, do you feel that you got directions across? This is, I think we would like to avoid it as much as possible, but your scenario of putting it in the least desirable place, away from homes and other commercial areas, I think is a good strategy, but we would welcome to some insights from legal when we get together with Council and discuss this.
Okay.
And just one other question, is this just proactive discussion, or has any interest been expressed in either three or four for pawn shops or for an off-track betting establishment?
This is proactive. We haven't gotten any applications for this.
Okay, thank you.
Trying to, yeah, it's better to be proactive on these things, it's my, it's.
Agreed.
Let's see, where are we going next? This is something I believe that's come up, and this is, this one, I, I really feel that this is a problem here with assembly. There's a conflict in our code, is how we define assembly within a closed area, and the tables allow for assembly, which includes, let me see, it's not permitted, I'm sorry, assembly is not permitted in the downtown district, which would include churches, but a movie theater excluding drive, drive-in theaters is allowed. And they're both, by building code, they're both assembly uses, and so I think there needs to be equal treatment on assembly. So my suggestion in that regard is that we make them condition, permitted by right, assembly permitted by right, in the downtown area. I know, but not, not to, not to make the church go through a CUP downtown. I understand why that, that, that would be a problem, I think. You need, I think we need, but a church being permitted to have a CUP, but not a movie theater, I think is a problem. They're both assembly uses. Now, you know, realistically, a church has got to have a lot of parking, they're going to be in Sunday. I understand where, where the town may be coming from that, but I think that one's, that one's a problem that needs to be corrected. So I'm suggesting that we allow it as, assembly as a conditional use in the B1, permitted in the B2, which is the general commercial, permitted in the tourist commercial. By the way, there is no property that's owned in the town that's TRC, so there is no property, there's just, that's a district that we have. And then in the downtown, we make both uses a conditional, so either make the movies and the churches allowed by right, or you make them conditional. And I'm suggesting maybe make them conditional, since you want to, you want, you want to have some review of those, I believe, that.
So a couple of things. Is there a limit by head count as to what an assembly is? Is it more than 10, more than 50?
I believe there, I think the building code does provide for that, but I, it's, it deals with occupancy and load, I don't know.
I think that would be really helpful. So for instance, the Suter House, we have small recitals. And I, I don't know if you consider that a concert hall, it's a theater, it's definitely an assembly of people.
I think the movie theater would clear, a church and a movie theater are clearly assembly. This building, this, this bill, this, this auditorium right here is assembly, but I.
But I was thinking, this is a municipal building, so this is talking commercial? Or no? Does this, is this building count? Because I had raised that before. This is a fabulous stage, it'd be great to have performances in here, so would that fall under this?
It has, the assembly use has more to do with, I, we're doing, I'm kind of mixing apples and oranges here, this, we got, we're talking about use right now, but the building code makes a designation on assembly occupancy. So the two are different. They're similar, but they're different from the standpoint, I, I think that the, my, the way I read the code now is, if you, a church is required to have a conditional use permit downtown, because you're probably concerned about it taking too much parking and taking up, it's not a revenue generating use, and it doesn't add to the commercial base of a downtown, which I, which I agree, and that, that could be a problem. But a movie theater is something you want downtown, that's where you find a lot, you know, an old downtown would be great to have a movie theater. And, but they both have, they have similar characteristics. So I think not, treating a church more restrictive than a movie theater can be a problem, and I, I, and I think there needs to be some equal treatment of those two uses.
Agreed. And my, the, the past experience we had, I believe, with the church wanting to come downtown, was they were also going to have retail and community services, right? So that offsets, and also, I would love for it to be a parking issue in Florence on a Sunday, but honestly, it's not a problem.
That's, that's what our goal is, so we have parking problem downtown, I bring you parking problem, yeah. But I, so that's my point, is we either recommend, the Commission should recommend conditional use permit for both of them, or permit them both by right, and take your chance on that.
Thumbs up on the recommendation, even?
For conditional use, yeah.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, yeah. Of course, thinking about it now, with the TRC designation, that's where we should put the other places.
I think you got a thumbs up from us on this one.
Okay. Thumbs up on the conditional use permit?
Yes.
As, as outlined and recommended.
The next one has come up, and this is, I believe, could be a real problem for us, another, and it's just a clarification on manufactured homes, modular homes, and then what is called stick-built homes, single-family homes. And this has actually come up just recently, since I've been here, there is, there's a conflict in the R16 district, which is, you know, the traditional single-family district. the traditional single-family district. Manufactured homes are not permitted in the table, but they're allowed in the R1-6 district with approval of a CUP. And so staff recommends that we just... The manufactured homes not be allowed with a CUP in the R1 district. That would preserve the integrity of site-built homes, and that would eliminate that conflict where you've got it allowed. It's not permitted in the table, but it's permitted with a CUP in the R1-6 district in the list of uses. So my suggestion, just as you see recommended, is take out the manufactured homes as a conditional use permit in the R1-6 district. I think that's... That should be an easy one, I hope.
Unanimous thumbs up on your recommendations on this one.
The next one, I bring this to you. I don't... It hasn't come up, but then the next level of a single-family neighborhood is what is known as the R1... I'm sorry, R1-18, which means that the minimum lot size is 18,000 square feet. And right now, the R1-8 is the lowest density-type urban community we have in the code. We do allow, right now, manufactured homes with a CUP in the R1-18 district that could be adjacent to an R1-6 neighborhood. I think that's incompatible. I would recommend we take out manufactured homes also in the R1-18 district. I just don't think... They still are allowed in rural residential. They're allowed in the mobile home subdivisions. They're allowed in the rural agriculture, two districts there, and the ranchettes. So there's several opportunities to have manufactured homes in the community. So I think that that would make some sense to take that out.
Unanimous thumbs up on that recommendation as well. And just, you brought up something. Do we have areas that are designated as mobile home subdivisions?
Yes.
That they're current? I know they're our current, but are there areas in the future that would be designated for that, as you envision, as you look at our general plan?
In our general plan, we don't specifically have manufactured home subdivision as a land use. That would probably go in your community subdivision areas, too. There are manufactured home subdivision zonings within the downtown area. They are not very big, and a lot of them are pretty much already full. If someone were to try to rezone, they'd more than likely have to be more on the outskirts, since those are the largest parcels. So if you're going to rezone, you need to have at least an eight-acre parcel for a manufactured home subdivision zoning.
If I can... Before we move on, you might want to rotate your slide.
Yeah.
Just for anybody playing along with the home version of the game.
Can I ask where tiny homes fit in this discussion, or do they not? Or how...
I'm sorry. I didn't hear what you said.
Tiny homes, how do they fit in this mobile home discussion, or do they just not apply here?
It depends on the type of tiny home. There are your mobile tiny homes, which are considered recreational vehicles. There are some that fit the standard for a manufactured home, so they would be continued manufactured, but some are site builds onto a foundation. And there are provisions, I believe in the 2018 code, but very minimal. So if they are built to our international residential code standards, we would allow them on a single-family lot. If they're built to the HUD standards, which is what the manufactured homes are, or if they come on that RV format, then they need to go in those zoning areas.
Thank you.
Okay. So moving along. The next item is the sale/lease of automobiles, recreational vehicles, manufactured homes, boats, trailers, et cetera. There is some areas that are kind of confusing in this area, as well as we recently had a case, of course, you're familiar with, with the storage of recreational vehicles up by Anthem, and that was not addressed in our code. And the staff made a determination that it required a CUP, and so the rest is history there, so we want to clarify that one. So first of all, in the district table, it's very confusing. It has permitted slash conditional approval. In other words, it could be either or. And so it's confusing to me, and it must be confusing to others, I would assume, since we work with the document quite a bit. So I think we need guidance as to make it either permitted or conditional, one way or the other, but not have both. So the sale of manufactured homes is allowed as a permitted use or a conditional use in the B2, TRC, and industrial districts. And staff suggests allowing this use with a conditional use permit in the B2 and the TRC districts, but allow it by right in the industrial districts, just because it takes a lot of land, and I think that I doubt if we'll have too much of that in Florence proper with the sale of manufactured homes. That usually, they're usually along a highway, would take several acres. So I'm just clarifying the fact that it's where it's permitted and where it would be a conditional use. And like I indicated before, there is no property zone, TRC, within the community right now. So we're taking it out of the B2, let's see, and we are making it conditional uses if you go down to pay... Where it says 150, 60 of the code, we're adding it as conditional uses, the sale of new or used automobiles, trucks, boats, trailers, recreational vehicles, the sale of new manufactured homes. And then the last one we added because of the other... The issue we had is the storage of recreational vehicles, boats and trailers. It would be required to have a CUP in the B2 district. That...
So are we saying there are no zoned areas by right where these things can just go?
No. I believe, right now, the sale of new manufactured home is allowed as... It says that... Which is confusing, is that the table provides for both permitted and conditional approval, which...
So aren't we trying to clarify that?
I'm just trying to say, we need to make a decision. I don't understand why the table has both permitted and commercial.
You want me to show them?
Yeah, you want to... We'll show you what I'm talking about.
So in our code, this is the regulation table. This is where we base a lot of the things. What he's talking about is here. We have, in B2, a gasoline dispensing or service station is either permitted slash or conditional.
Which one is it?
And we don't know which one it means. We don't know how that came to be. We don't know how that happened, but we just need to make sure that is clarified.
If I think back to the storage facility and back of the Circle K, I like the idea of it being conditional only because of the traffic situation it can create. It's not that we have an issue with the type of business, but where it is, if it's going to create a traffic flow issue, gives us the ability to disagree.
Or if it's just going to be an eyesore. I mean, is that to take into consideration, too?
We don't agree on that, Fred.
But that's why we have these conversations.
It's true. No, it's true.
And actually, if I can just... Marion, what you showed us there, one of the... Yeah, down here, under grocery and supermarket, it says halfway houses, and it's just a row of N's, saying not permitted. Fine with that. Why can't we use that for the other places we were just talking about?
Well, and that's where we have... You have the row of N's, and then in light industrial and heavy industrial, you do have two Cs.
All right. If you're going to be like that.
So it is, in a way...
In a way.
It is allowed, but for the most part, in all of our major commercial, no.
Okay. So we should allow that stuff in TRC?
But just the main part is just clarifying this.
Is it permitted or is it conditional?
That's why I make the big money.
So I think on this one, we'd like to see a conditional use.
Conditional, for sure.
Absolutely.
Okay. So we did a poll up here, and you got a thumbs up for your recommendations on this one as well.
And I would like to go on the record and thank you for this, because when that whole situation was going down, after the meeting, I offhandedly said, "What I'd like to do one of these days is look at the zoning and fix this stuff." Thank you.
And I think this is one where the chairman asks about other communities. This is one where most communities would have this as a conditional use permit, would not allow this by right. You would never... It's not in most communities allowed by right, just because of the size and the traffic volume and acreage that's required. Unless you get a new... And usually, car dealers... New car dealerships generally are in parks already, and they congregate together. And so we would love to have a new car dealerships within an area, and they... As you know, they congregate together. So the next one is gasoline dispensing, and I think Mari just showed you what the conflict was with the P slash C, which means it could be permitted or conditional in the B2, the TRC, and industrial districts. We just recommend the CUP for the B2 and the TRC districts, and be a permitted use in the industrial. Most gas stations are... We could allow the gas station. What's I'm concerned about here is gasoline dispensing. That could mean more than just a gasoline station, and more than just a service station. So that could be a refinery of some sort. I don't know if that's... I think you could allow that by right in the commercial district. Going back to what Commissioner Adams said, that we want to eliminate the hoops to jump through, so possibly you want to make that permitted by right.
I may be off the mark, but I'm thinking the common sense approach here for all of these. If it's P slash C, remove the P. No matter where it is, no matter what the zone is, go with the C. Go with conditional use. I mean, I appreciate the work you put into this, breaking it down, but I think that's really the simplest fix. If any place where there's a question, make it conditional use. Make them have to come to us.
We just need to be careful, though, because we want to say, "We are open for business." And if we make it too hard and too many hoops, then people are going to go, "Hey, I don't think I want to be there." And there's a lot of places where you would expect a service station to be to serve gas, but there are places that you wouldn't expect it, and those should be conditional, and where they're expected, I think we should permit them.
But I think the hope would be, when it's a clear-cut case, we would breeze through the conditional use conversation.
It's...
It is another step, but I understand.
You would hope.
As it stands now, though, if it's got that P slash C designation, they'd have to come to us anyway, because the staff doesn't know which way does it go? Is it permitted, or is it a conditional use? Because the legislation isn't clear. The code isn't clear.
I absolutely agree that the P slash C should be eliminated, but I just think we need to be really careful with having someone from the outside look in and go, "You know, every other municipality that I deal with, if I wanted to put this on the corner of walk and don't walk, it's a permitted use. It's a commercial corner, but here, I've got to go and dance through a conditional use permit?"
Well, but what I'm saying is, they still have to do that now, anyway. If they look and they see that, they...
I'm just saying, we just need to be careful with this. We want to be open for business and draw people in, and putting ourselves in a conditional everything, and everybody around us is permitting it at obvious locations.
Oh, no. I... Yes, we agree.
Even though we stood up here and say, "Yeah, we would love to have this, and we will push it right through the process." Well, if we're going to do that, why don't we just permit it?
This is not a science.
So is that clear as mud?
This is a lot of art here. It has to do with community values and what... How we want to approach businesses and what... How much involvement you want to be involved in the development of certain uses. The only argument for gas stations, it attracts a lot of traffic, and getting in and out of a gas station can be dangerous. It could be smooth. Most people, I know I do, and I think a lot of people, look for places to go where it's convenient to get in and out safely. And gas stations are notorious where sometimes difficult to get in and out of, and especially when they're on a corn...
Well, I think our most recent Circle K is a great example, and I don't know, in the chronology, I was not on planning and zoning then, but to have the Safeway traffic, the Circle K traffic, two schools and a hospital. I mean, certainly, that's a call for a conditional use to consider. Again, the traffic impact and children riding bikes. So that's where I would see it as important, to be able to have that discussion.
So maybe I just need some clarification as to how we do business, then. If we have a major... Two major arterial intersection, and we have a gasoline dispenser that wants to come in there and build on that corner, everyone would probably say, "Yeah, that's a wonderful location, great access." And we... It's labeled P, permitted. What would we get to see? What would we get to review in that? Would it just be carte blanche, do what you want to do?
If it is... Mr. Chairman, if it's a P, permitted, it would be permitted by right. In other words, the only thing we'd be looking... The commission would be looking at is the design, the site plan, the layout, but it would be allowed by right. You wouldn't have a right to say no to that use at that corner.
Right. But what... It would be allowed by right. That use would be allowed, but we would have a say in the number of curb cuts, where the curb cuts would be, and all that other stuff, to address the traffic situation, and we could require of them a traffic analysis that would give us that feeling that, "Yeah, we're doing this right." It wouldn't just be carte blanche, you know, go out there and put whatever curb cuts you want, or median cuts, or things like that. And I think that's what our concern is. We just don't want carte blanche.
That's correct.
See, that's the answer. So we could actually say it's permitted, because we can say, "You can't have 12 filling stations. You can only have six," if we think it's a traffic impediment.
Right. And if to bring up a good example, we just did the... We did the Circle K in Anthem on that corner, and for that one, they had to go through the design review. So the commission definitely had a say in whether how that traffic worked. They looked at the deceleration lanes, how many exits and entrances, where those curb cuts were, if they were across from the marketplace, the signage, the parking lot spaces. So they def... Commission had a good range of review on that. So that would be something similar to where we would pick and choose where we allow some of these things, like this gas and servicing. It's best for those B2 areas within the downtown area. A lot of those B2s are along 79. Very few are within the downtown. So if we pick and choose not to have it within the DC area, or not with having it within the residential or neighborhood office, but to have it strictly more B2, light industrial, or a B1, which is just a stepped-down commercial, that would be better to have it permitted than just conditional, because those places are along these highways. They are those commercial areas. That's where they will benefit the most, and then we won't have to make them jump through hoops, but they will still have to go through a design review.
And just to put another nail in this, what was the designation, or was it part of a PAD where the Circle K went in?
The Circle K was actually not within the PUD. They were in a piece of land owned by Legacy, which is their own company. This piece was in the area of Anthem, but that parcel was an out parcel, so it was not part of Anthem. But it was still highway business, commercial, which allowed the gas station.
So I don't... Maybe my memory is foggy. I don't remember them needing to get a conditional use permit for that.
They did not need a conditional use permit. They came straight for design review.
And we had lots of input, and we got a good product. So I think we're okay.
I don't know. I'm just... I like the idea of CUPs, because it gives us more control. And if all we get is design review, at that point, we're interior decorators, and we're like traffic cops on Valley, and, "Slow down, you can't do that." Whereas if we have a CUP, we can say, "No, we don't want that business there." say, no, we don't want that business there.
You know, the other example, across the street in the Safeway Center, which the beauty of having Pulte and a master plan developer take the corner, and we approved the layout and the plat and the curb cuts in advance. So, we knew how the circulation was going to work. So, everything seems is much better in terms of layout and traffic. When you have piecemeal development like you have on the other side of the street, that's, can be more problematic.
As we've seen.
As you've seen. So...
As I understand it, one of the problems could be headed off. At the time, Pulte was taking over the town, they were required to donate some land for schools. And we apparently didn't really ride herd on that, because that's not the ideal entry and exit for schools and school buses, right? So, I would think now, as we develop more master planned communities, should they be required to have a school, I'm hoping we have a little more say on where that land would be, so we don't create the issue that we have today.
We don't want to get too far off of that.
Yeah, okay.
Off the agenda here, but...
All right.
I think what we're trying to do here, and what we'll be doing with this process, is trying to rein in the mistakes made by previous planning and zoning, previous town councils, previous administrations. When these developers, Pulte came in, people saw dollar signs, and that's all they thought about. And they didn't think about, well, what's this going to be like in 20 years? And I think that's what we're trying to rectify here.
I'm neutral on this, so you all go ahead and vote.
Yeah. And again, having grown up in a municipality that was at one time in the situation that Florence is in, and watched what happened, I'm all for controls, but I also think that we need to have predictability. And when we have too many things under conditional use permits, it just raises questions, because a lot of these entities aren't, you know, Bob and Sally who live here that know us and love us. They're Jim and Bob who have their residence in New York City and their financial backers, and they're going, why do we have to go jump through a conditional use permit on an obvious? So...
In my career, what I have found, developers, the thing they really want the most, they want certainty and predictability. They don't want, they want to know going in what the rules are and what's expected of them, and they don't like changes to those rules. And you can't blame them. So, when you get into a public forum, that brings a lot of uncertainty to them. So, the less, the more certainty you can provide to them, the more comfortable they are about investing in the community. And stability is important, too, that they've seen a pattern of stability when, that the administration and the elected officials don't change things at a whim. That's important, too.
So, I think this is kind of like the pawn shop discussion. If staff could narrow it down to certain districts where it makes sense, like on the 79, those kinds of things, and say it's permitted there, that would be one streamlined process.
Well, we can't be discriminatory. We have to do it by district. So, that's the only thing. So, the way that pawn shops can be just a CUP and then industrial. I'll go back to the industrial comment.
So, in the same vein as we've been discussing, where we didn't have code, what about charging stations for electric vehicles? Do we have code covering that?
We do. Our parking code allows for electric charging stations.
It's in the parking code?
Yeah, but it's a should and not a shall.
Okay, great.
That's not a problem. So, I think we, are you ready to move on to medical, dental, and... This one's an easy one.
If you are.
Yes, I was ready. I got enough. I'm getting gas from the last one, yes. That was a joke. Let's see, medical, dental, and clinical laboratories. I think this is an easy one. They're allowed by right in the B2 district, which is the general commercial, but they're required to have either a permitted or conditional use in the TRC district. I think we ought to allow it by right, because it's very similar in characteristics. The B2 district and the TRC district are very similar. So, that one should be an easy one.
You were right. We got, you got four thumbs up on that one.
The next one I find pretty convoluted is the pharmacy. We make a distinction in a development code with a pharmacy that's less than 10,000 square feet and one that's greater than 10,000 square feet. Actually, I have some insight in this one. I actually talked to the real estate guy for Walgreens last week in regards to what criteria is necessary to locate a Walgreens. They actually have three prototypes that they offer communities. Well, they don't offer it to communities. They have three prototypes. They'll put in communities based upon population and density. And so, the smallest one they have is only 2,500 square feet, which is pretty small. That's the small Walgreens. And the next one is a medium, they call medium Walgreens. And it actually, I did the calculation on it. It's 9,950 square feet. So, it's less than 10,000 square feet is the medium prototype. And then, anything over that is the large Walgreens. And most of them, I think Walgreens, and just been my experience and what, talking to Walgreens and locating Walgreens in other communities, they want to be at the corner, and they got to have a drive-through. I mean, that's kind of the template for them. The only time you see Walgreens generally, or CVS, and without, is in a, without a drive-through, is in large metropolitan areas and downtown areas where it's just not feasible to do drive-throughs. But in a suburban-type development, like we have in Florence and most Arizona communities have, you'll have it, it'll be at a corner, and it'll have a drive-through. And also, CVS isn't building, they're not very aggressive in building stores right now, but Walgreens still is. So, anyways, my point here is, I think this distinction is probably not necessary, really. I don't think we'll find too many, if we have a Walgreens in a shopping center, it probably won't be in-line. It'll probably be out by the street, and it'll probably be somewheres between 2,500 square feet and 10,000 square feet. So, just with that said, I, there's an issue with the code in terms of retail use. Basically, in the B1 district, which is the neighborhood business, that provides for retail uses of less than 10,000 square feet, which I think that we probably should allow for greater than that. But anyways, the district tables allows pharmacies of that size. However, the table indicates the pharmacies of greater than 10,000 square feet are permitted slash conditional. So, we need to either make it permitted or conditional, which somewhat conflicts with the B1 district, which allows it for less than 10,000 square feet. So, I just want to, once again, take out either permitted or conditional in the B1 district for pharmacies of greater than 10,000 square feet. I probably confused you and probably, sorry. There's some other conflicts there. I guess I didn't spell it out very well in this long paragraph. It was just, maybe if I outlined it, come back to you in an outline form. I'm trying to clean the issue up with pharmacies. I think we could clean it up by just taking out that 10,000 square feet. I'm not sure that that's really that important in the big scheme of things. Walgreens, I'm using Walgreens as an example, because if we get a drugstore, it's probably, a standalone drugstore will probably be a Walgreens, is my point. Not that I'm promoting them or anything. I'm just using them as an example based upon my experience. Do you want me to come back to you with this and give you a little bit more specificity? But I'm trying to get out the permitted and conditional on that.
I think we agree with that. And I read this paragraph like three different times in preparation for this and...
You were lost.
And got three different reads off of it. So, I was a little bit lost. So, I appreciate...
Frankly, I did, too. I read it a couple of times after I wrote it, and I couldn't understand what I was saying. So, maybe I need to rewrite it. To be honest, I had a hard time following my own thought pattern. I don't know what I, hopefully I wasn't on any kind of medication when I wrote that. Anyways...
I think we desperately need a pharmacy, especially walkable downtown, since Sun Life closed. Those folks are really hurting for pharmacy.
And the indication I got, Walgreens is interested in coming to Florence. So, I'm, there's some interest there.
And hopefully, these rooftops that we permitted in at least the homes at the first item tonight will entice them to get here when we get more people in this area, in this part of town, so...
Right. So, I will clean that up. But I think generally, I, my suggestion, we just eliminate the 10,000 square feet and allow them where, you know, the only area that, I can't think of an area that they would go in that would be a problem for us, frankly. Would they go in our downtown? I don't think they would go in our downtown, even if we permitted it. I don't think they would go there, because there's a lack of drive-through. But I think it would be wonderful to have it, like Commissioner Adams said, it would be wonderful if we could have a pharmacy. So, I think we should eliminate the roadblocks for a pharmacy to locate in the community. I guess, is there a general agreement on that kind of concept?
I think you have general agreement, and I hope the industry has learned their lesson, because a previous municipality that I lived in, you would have thought we were the sickest community in the world, because a pharmacy was coming up on every intersection, essentially. And all the stores that were being built had pharmacies in them. And now, you look at several of these pharmacies that came on the corners, and they've turned into different businesses, to churches, to other things, just to try to fill a use there, because they couldn't sustain themselves.
Okay. Moving on, printing shops. Once again, it says permitted, conditional in the B1 district. We can allow it as a CUP, or we can, I am suggesting a CUP, but if you'd like it as a permitted use. I don't think we get too many print shops nowadays. It's sort of something that's kind of outdated.
So, is this like a Kinko's, or is that what you're talking about?
A print, yes. Or it could be a newspaper print shop. But I, yeah, just those Kinko's. I don't think you see too many of those. Usually, those are, the print, printing is done and associated with Office Max or an office store.
There are standalone, there are standalone independent places.
There are.
T-shirts and posters and things like that, embroidery, that kind of jazz.
Okay. Then...
Yeah. We, yeah. We okay on this one, Maggie? We got, I think we had thumbs up on that one.
Thumbs up for...
On your recommendation.
The printing, yeah.
Printing shop.
Okay.
With the CUP, yeah.
With the CUP?
Yeah, well, what you have here.
That's your recommendation.
As your recommendation.
Okay.
CUP.
Okay. Public, private, and parochial schools, the TRC district, they're permitted slash conditional. They're not specifically listed in the TRC district. I'd say we allow them with a CUP. Is that a...
Yeah.
Once again, I'm trying to get either one or the other.
Can I ask a clarification question on schools, in particular charter schools? They, they're popping up all around, and there seems to be, from my perspective, very little regulation. They're very aesthetically pleasing, but because they don't bus and parents have to haul their kids to and from, they are traffic nightmares. And I can see one growing in great scale out in the Anthem area, where when highway becomes a full arterial and is not constrained to the north there, and people are, right now, they're stacking out onto that road, you know, at least twice a day. Will this, when we, even if we have a conditional use permit, do we have any clout to deal with something like that?
Well, Chair, Commission, very limited. The state statutes give cities and towns very limited ability to regulate schools. Public school, unfortunately, private schools or charter schools have to be treated like public schools in almost every way. And so, the school district can say, thumb their nose at the city and town and say, we don't have to comply with your zoning regulations. The only thing they have to do, if they want city or town utilities, we can put, we can, and curb cuts and traffic and in the right of way, if they want to access our roads, they want to access our utilities, we can regulate that to a school. But we have very limited ability to regulate design, location, where they're going to go. I, in my previous life and other communities, I had a good relationship with the school district superintendent, and they would go through the public process, because we had a, some joint, we had some agreements where we would share facilities. We'd work together on things. So, it was more of a partnership we had with the schools. It wasn't the city against the school district. We were in it together. And so, they would conform to the city's wishes, for the most part. We would try to reach compromise, especially when it came to mostly, as the chairman indicated, traffic was always, you know, the, when, in the mornings, when the folks, kids got dropped off, and in the afternoons, it could be a nightmare. I've seen nightmares in other communities. We had to actually sit down with the school district and made some recommendations and some changes. It was just as bad for them as it was for us. And so, it's more of a partnership that you have to work through. Whether we could apply a CUP requirement, it'd be, you know, probably because they're willing to do it, because they want our utilities and our curb cuts. That's kind of where I'm, if you understand what I'm saying, you know, we have limited ability to regulate schools.
Okay. Thumbs up up here.
I said a lot there. Quarries. They're a temporary use, but allowed by right in the heavy industrial district. I think we should, that's one I think the CUP should apply to, in both light and heavy industrial district. Flag poles, I think there's probably...
So, you got the four thumbs up on the quarries, right? Okay.
And I know we're running out of time here. Flag poles, we did, we did have a commercial company come in and wanted to put a flag pole higher than 20 feet in height for the American flag, and thought that was kind of, we limited to not exceeding 20 feet in height. But if you have a commercial building that may be 30 feet in height, you know, a lot of communities will allow it up to the roof line, not just limit it arbitrarily to 20 feet.
I have a couple of questions on this one. The one where the defining point here is not extending above the roof of a building. Many times, it's not the roof that you see, it's the parapet wall.
Right.
Is, would, do we need to clarify? It would be the roof or the parapet wall, whichever is higher?
Yes, I would, Mr. Chairman, I would consider the parapet wall part of the roof, roof line, but we can, we can make that just...
I just noticed when they define it, it's not in many instances. Then, the second one that always, I don't know if it bothers me, because I'm just used to it now, is model homes with the 100-foot-tall pole flying flags.
Yeah, exactly. And this is one that, where you get into, this is an exemption, this is under the exemptions for sign permits. So, they don't have to get a sign permit to put an American flag up or an Arizona flag. And we're getting to, this one could be a little sensitive in terms of legality, where you're not, you, folks will really challenge you on not allowing an American flag or an Arizona flag on a house or a commercial property. So, this is just limiting where you don't need a sign permit. So, we're just kind of reducing, so if they're going to go over that, then it's another story. They would need sign permit. They would need signed permit.
And I guess the, the question about model homes is, it just rubs me a little bit wrong when the American flag is used not, for nothing more than advertisement versus a patriotic intent, so.
That's true.
That's all I'll say.
It's all about sales, yes, model homes. I think the easy one, the preliminary plat, I, I wrote a lot there, but this, this one's really easy. Most communities, um, a preliminary plat, once the commission approves a preliminary plat, right now it's good for one year, and they're eligible for a six-month extension of that preliminary plat. And what most communities have found was that a year's not enough, because in that year, they have to develop their improvement plans for their infrastructure and everything lined up, their, their financing and everything for, to submit a final plat, and also prepare a final plat, and get their financing arranged. A year's not enough, and so we're suggesting two years with a six-month extension for approval of a preliminary plat. It just gives them an extra year, which is more probably representative of what happens in the, in the real world. A lot of preliminary plats get approved, and then they just sit there and they, they, they have to start all over again after. And the reason you want to put a time limit on it is because the code can change, the, the engineering standards can change over that time, so you want to have the ability to re, re, relook at that preliminary plat and code changes, so.
And I, I just had one question on this. If two years is the standard, would it be better to have an 18-month preliminary plat and the opportunity for them to get another six months with?
I was gonna, I was gonna suggest the same thing.
Versus, versus two and a half years?
The reason, uh, instead of having a hard and fast rule, the reason for that, you want to put an extension is whether the end of, whether the developer is actually progressing and making progress, or are they just sitting on it and not doing anything? So that gives you, if maybe they're almost at the finish line, they almost got it done, and all they need is a couple of months left, then why not give them an extension? But if they're not moving forward smartly, then that's why you want to give yourself a little bit of latitude. I mean, that, that's, that's the thinking.
You have more experience, and I'm not sure, and I'm, I'm sure, and today is very hard to get your financing and get your costs under control. I would lean more towards the 18 months with a six-month extension. I, I don't really like two years plus another six months. We've had a lot of our plats tied up for a long time around here, and I'd rather see something happening. And, you know, if they're, if they're negotiating with you in good faith, I think that that could happen. But if they go away and nothing's happening for two years, and then they want six months, and then where are we?
Yeah, I, I think 18 months with a six month.
I think we have consensus on that.
18 months and with a six month.
Unless you feel that that's non-productive.
No, I think that's.
I mean, what you see every day, we don't want to get in the way here, but I'd like to see a little bit of a hammer to keep, keep it moving.
I want to see them have some skin in the game. You know, if you give them two years, ah, yeah, I got two years, and then I can get another six months.
That's a long time.
No.
And you're not seeing any.
Right. It's two years total. 18 months with a six-month extension if you need it.
Thumbs up. The next one is the final plats. We do not have a time limit. If a final plat is approved by council, the, it, there's not a time limit for it to be recorded. So we do have occasion where final plats go through the whole process, and they just sit there and they're not, because once you, you have to get financing lined up, and if they don't get the financing for some reason, you don't record the final plat, of course. So, uh, and it could sit there for years. So we're suggesting that they have a 12-month period after the town council approves a final plat, that they've got to record it. If they don't, it's expired, they'd have to come back and get it re-approved.
I, I a hundred percent agree. This also affects our designation of assured water supply.
Yes.
When we tie that up with a plat that's not moving forward.
Right. Exactly.
Maybe I'm just a contrarian, but I don't like the idea of a year. I'd rather it have to be six months.
Six months.
If, if it went through the process and it's been, and it's all finalized, it's ready to go, six months.
Say six months.
Get it done.
I'm, I'm there.
Part of this is, is, is the progression of approval of, of the, of all the plans to utility plans and, and getting all the approvals with the power companies and the gas companies and all that. So I, I think, I think a year is fair, but it, it's, it's going to be nice to have that mark in the sand that says, you got a year.
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of developers, they don't have, they have to get things, let's say through ADQ, you have, they prepare their water and sewer, and they have to actually submit that to ADQ and get it approved. And they're not the fastest group, and they got to coordinate it with Southwest Gas, and it takes a lot longer than you think.
Is there an average turnaround time for that?
Uh, I don't know of an average turnaround time. It depends on who the developer is and how loudly they scream, I guess, at the state.
How much they grease that wheel?
Yeah. Probably.
Many of those turnaround times, especially with some of the state agencies, is six months.
Six months. So 12 months would be fair.
So I, I think a year is fair.
I concur.
So that, so now we move on to definitions, if that's, uh, let me move on. I know I hit you with a lot tonight. This was, so there's some definitions that need some work. The one that we've been confronted with is group homes. And it's kind of an old terminology, would, I, I'm suggesting we change it. We don't have, well, one problem is, we don't have group homes defined in our development code. We need to have a definition. So I'm suggesting we break it up into what are called assisted living home or assisted living facility. That's more in tune with what other communities have. And, and typically, an assisted living home is one to 10 people in a residential setting, in a home, in a residential neighborhood, without signage, but is able to accommodate 24-hour supervisory care, probably no skilled nursing, no doctor, but that's typical, and that's throughout the valley, is, is what is called assisted, assisted living home. We've gotten requests for those. And they would be basically, like I said, a detached, single-family home. They have to have, they still, they still have some building code requirements, they have to have ADA accessibility with a ramp, but no signage out front. So that's, that's the definition that I'm suggesting. That would be, with the new definition, they'd be allowed as a permitted use in the multifamily district and as a CUP in other, other residential districts. So they would require a CUP. A lot of communities don't require a CUP, some do, so that, that's a mixed bag. I, it, it's, I've seen it as a CUP in a lot of neighborhoods, and a lot of neighbors come out and are very vocally opposed to those. But generally, even if you, if you drive through neighborhoods in Phoenix and Chandler and elsewhere, there's assisted living homes in lots of areas, and you would never even know it's a single, uh, assisted living facility there.
As you drive through?
As you drive through.
As you drive through. If you live there, and the guy keeps walking outside arguing with the tree in his front yard, it is a problem. So I'm all for a CUP on that, if, if we have to even have them.
All right.
I had one question on these because just the, the definition here, hospice care, because quite often that is done in a, in a situation like this, where would that fit in?
You can have hospice care in both assisted living home or assisted living facility.
And I, with the word in here, it says with a disability, and I didn't know if hospice and, you know, end-of-life care is considered disability.
It is.
But that's more medical, I think.
Hospice care, the only thing is different is that you're, when you're in hospice care, you've been diagnosed with a terminal illness, and hospice just provides comfort to that individual, provides a medication to make that individual comfortable, or a bed that, that's appropriate, comes in and checks on the person. That's all, that's all hospice would do. It has, it would have no effect on the facility or the location.
I just wanted to make sure it was covered here under this definition.
It, yeah, it would be, I, unfortunately, I've had a personal experience with that with my parents. So assisted living facility, sounds like the same, but that's, that's a facility with greater than 10. And typically, they, they could be, they could have 24-hour supervisory care, or they could have doctors, nurses. Usually you see, there's some large assisted living facilities in the Phoenix metro area. You find those usually in commercial areas. It's more of a commercial use or a multifamily use. I've seen them even in industrial area in, in Glendale. So those you don't see in residential areas. So that, that's basically, it's more of a, like I said, it's more of a use that is recommended as permitted in the multifamily and B2 districts. So it's more of a commercial or multifamily district. Would not be allowed in residential areas.
And we actually could really use one of those here, an assisted living facility, a nursing home.
And as, and my experience in other communities, as a community like Ages, where you have active adult community, they become less active as they get older, unfortunately, and you have one spouse that may need assistance, the other spouse is still healthy, they want to keep their home, but they want to have their, their spouse close by to take care of them. So what you'll see is more and more assisted living facilities popping up near active adult communities like, like we have in Anthem. So I think that would make sense to encourage that type of a use, because it's going to come whether the town wants it or not. I mean, it's, there's going to be pressure to have that.
I think it's good we're having these conversations. As I understand it, they're, they fall into the same category of schools that they can override zoning, right? So they can go into a residential neighborhood.
Now, we, Commissioner Adams, we, we have control over these, these facilities.
Well, it's, it's coming. So, I mean, this whole discussion is very proactive, and I think it reflects good planning.
It's funny now, talking about this, now, that when Mosaic wanted to have that storage facility behind their building in Anthem, that's where you should put a nursing home. It's like a perfect spot for it.
Exactly.
That, right there is a perfect spot for it. So, yeah, that's, that's.
Let's see, the next one, I think there, so there's, I, agreement on those?
Yes.
I think that we're, we'd be up to date and consistent with what other communities are doing in that regard. And then there's a definition for halfway house in our, it's only allowed in industrial districts with the approval of a CUP. I, that's an old term. I think the, more of a, let me get the.
Politically correct term? It's transitional?
Transitional housing.
Yeah.
It's a lot softer and.
Call it a halfway house.
So it, it involves more than, so we're expanding the scope of that definition. So it involves a rehabilitation training of individuals who are maybe released from institutionalized living, uh, housing like criminal activity, mental illness, drug addiction, and it allows for this readjustment to independent, more independent living arrangements. So that's why you call it traditional housing, as opposed to halfway.
I worked in the field for 10 years, it's a halfway house.
That's killing me here. I'm trying to be politically correct here.
I despise political correctness. Call it what it is.
But we're okay calling it a transitional house to get us.
I'm not. I'd call it a halfway house. I'll die on that hill.
I'm fine with transitional houses. Okay, three to one, I think.
If there is a modification, I'm assuming there will be, but we would update the correlating verbiage in the use table as well.
So they'd only be allowed with a CUP in industrial districts. Okay. So next one should be easy. We have a conflict in our code between chapter 90, which is animals, and chapter 150, which is the development code. We have, in our development code, four or more animals constitutes a kennel. The animal code says five or more, so we just want to make them consistent, both make it five or more would constitute a kennel. That's all, is what we're trying to do, bring consistency there.
I, I appreciate the consistency, and if this is getting off the agenda, you can just tell me to be quiet, we can talk about it another time. What, is this a workaround for people that just have a pack of dogs?
Well, and kennel is animals bred or boarded, and some do work around it, but the, the chapter 90 is directly from the Pinal County animal section, so that's where we're trying to be consistent. But in our code, it's four, it's four, so.
I appreciate the consistence, consistency in lining this up, I just, and, and this is kind of, might, might be a bigger discussion, I just, I, I'm seeing people walking like six dogs that all belong in their house, and I'm thinking, man, that, that isn't a kennel, what is? But, you know, in their mind, they're, they're just their pets, which is a good thing, but then if we try to come and say, hey, you're running a kennel here, and they say, no, no, I, I sell puppies once in a while, this is a commercial operation.
I, Chair, I.
And like I say, this might be a discussion for another time, but.
But I, I think, you know, going back to my experience, most codes I, I've had experience with is that you're limited by the number of household pets you can have in your single-family home. So four is usually the trigger in most communities, so you can't have more than two dogs and two cats. That would, that's, that's usually what I found, because I've seen instances in the valley where someone is, has mental problem and collects cats, or collects dogs in their home, and it, it is, it can be not only an eyesore, but it can be a real distraction to the neighborhood in terms of smell and odor and all the things that that brings. So I'll, I'll check the code, but I think that's what I found in most communities, no more than four household pets per, in a house.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we weren't defining a workaround opportunity for someone who wanted to abuse this, so.
Yeah, that's, that's.
I'm, I'm, and maybe it's just me, because I'm persnickety, but I'm at a loss. If, if the county number is five, why do we have to align with that? Why can't we say, yeah, sure, the county's fine with five? We, in Florence, it's four. If you want five, move somewhere else.
Well, and that's the adjustment of two separate parts of the code now, because you have the chapter 90 animals, which is where coenforcement draws their purview, and now you have our town code, which defines as different. So we do have to figure out between us, which one do we want to align with? And for animal control, that's mostly up for the county.
Is, is the county, if, if you have a, let's say you have a vicious dog that somebody calls in or something, do, do you have an IGA with the county that you would call them to respond to that?
Yes.
Yes.
So probably better.
County animal control is less than useless, having, having been involved with them, they're less than useless.
They are all we have.
That's all we have, and better, we might as well align with.
Less than useless.
The, the number should be, if the useless crew comes, we should at least have a line number.
Yeah, I, again, I'm going to be the dissenter here. I'm going to say, keep it at four with the county change.
Well, here's, here's the downstream problem. When we limit it to four, and let's say there are pets or just, you know, brought because they should go to the county shelter, they come across the street from my house to the police kennel, and then I'm up all night. We do have a problem, and I think it, it is recognized, the county facility is not being as responsive as when we agreed to the negotiation. So I'd like to keep it at five. I would like to not, especially if people.
That's increasing it to five. We're at four.
Oh, I'd like to move it to five and be consistent, so that those people that have five, I don't, I don't want to be taking pets away.
Or if they're coming out to handle it, and the numbers don't align, they leave, right? So I would agree. I would agree to move it to five.
Okay, so, and we, we have general. So, we have general... We have three to one that says, just align with the county since they're taking... Since they're the IGA with us to deal with this situation.
Okay. We will also... I think we'll also look at what the requirement for limitation for household pets in a single-family house. I think that's... Because they kind of go hand in hand, because the definition of kennel, I don't think people want to live next to a kennel. So, we really need to limit the number of animals in a single-family home.
That's a good point, and I think we would all agree with that, even if we are at odds then with the county.
Okay. Last, but not least, public utility facilities. Of course, this came up with the infamous water barn. I call it that. But I'm expanding the definition here, recommending we expand the definition of public facilities, public utility facilities, because it was somewhat lacking in our code. And so, actually putting more teeth into where they can go and requirements for them. So, building structures, equipment used by public utility for delivery of utility services, including but not limited to electric substation, gas pressure regulating stations, water production, water treatment, water storage facilities, and equipment, office buildings, and maintenance and storage yards. That pretty much covers everything I can think of with public utility facilities. So, it's further recommended that a conditional use permit be required for locating any of those facilities within a residential or a commercial zoning district, but it would be allowed by right in industrial districts. I think that would... I think that addresses... I can't say that, you know...
But to that end, and this is great, would the town still be above that?
I will always recommend, always recommend, and I have in my past communities, always recommended that the city or town lead by example, and we follow our own rules. If we don't want... If we establish the rules, then the town ought to follow our own rules. It's not, you know, do as we say and do as we do.
Right. No, that... Because right now, we're living... It's, you know, rules for thee and not for me, so...
Yes, but I don't... And I think the... And I can't believe the majority of council wouldn't agree with me, that we need to lead by example. That's what leadership's all about.
Absolutely. Agreed.
I would add two more elements to this. When you say water, most of the time, people envision that as clean drinking potable water. So, I would think you'd want to put wastewater in here. So, wastewater treatment and wastewater lift stations, things of that nature, so... Because it's a clarification, because a lot of those wastewater lift stations, you want to scrubber on it and other things as well.
I would agree with the wastewater treatment facility. The difference between water... Of course, I don't need to tell you what the difference between water and wastewater is, but it's obvious. You know, there's gravity involved here. So, we have to... Sometimes, those lift stations have to be located in certain places that make sense from an engineering standpoint. So, putting that through a CUP, you know, I understand... I understand the concern, but that... There's probably engineering concerns there, if you can...
No, I 100% agree, but a well-designed wastewater lift station is unknown to the community.
Yes.
Because it's behind a decorative wall, and it has... It's being scrubbed, so that there's no odors and things like that, so... And I... And there's... I know from my comrade to the right here that there is sensitivity with the type of enclosures that go in, that they're relevant to the part of town that they're put in and whatnot. So, I think a cursory look at some of those things would be good, just to make sure that we're not putting a CMU wall in an area where everybody else has got a different style of wall, just because it's...
Okay. I will add that. I just wanted to make that with the caveat. That was the reason for not including that. I was thinking of engineering. So, that would... I know I've given you a lot tonight. Maybe you want to sleep on all that, let that marinate for a couple of weeks or months. If you think of anything else that I missed, I don't... There's other... I think I tried to hit most of the major issues, and I think the issues are trying to be proactive on those some issues, and try to correct some of the issues that I think we need to correct.
No, I commend you and thank you for this. I think this is fantastic.
I know it was painful. I know it can be painful to go through codes. It's not exactly a fun, sexy thing to do, but it needs to be done.
You're absolutely right. It needs to be done. It's important to do. Again, as I said earlier, I've said this ad nauseam, ad infinitum, there's a lot of stuff. There's a lot of chickens coming home to roost now from deals that were done 20 years ago, and nobody thought about any of this stuff. So, I appreciate you taking the time, really, really, sincerely.
I'd just like to throw a thought out there, since we've been so proactive. The term agrivoltaics, and for a future discussion, how that may or may not play into us losing our farmland, and how we could combine the solar farmland idea. So, future discussion.
If you can do that with our call to the commission. So, yeah, I think that you have a consensus. Kudos for the proactive approach that you've taken to this. That's where planning should be, is not reactive but proactive, so we appreciate it.
That's what we're trying to do. Okay, thank you.
Just again, we're to presentations, information only, the first one being the second commissioner training session. Maricela, are you announcing that?
Yes. So, the second commissioner training, board and commission training is October 12, 6:00 PM, here in the town hall. If you haven't gone before, be a perfect time to come. We will have Lisa, as well as our legal counsel here, to go over all the ins and outs of being a part of the boards and commissions in the town of Florence. And on the first one, we had two commissioners here, two, three commissioners here. So, if you want to come again, you're more than welcome. If you didn't come in that first training, you want to come in the second one, October 12, 6:00 PM, is your day and time.
It was very, very beneficial. It was very informative, very beneficial, and kudos to everyone involved. Lisa was fantastic.
And just, will these be taped? I'm not going to be able to make this one. We've had a death in the family. We'll be traveling next week to go attend services, so...
They will not be taped, but we can see if we can record it.
That's what I mean. Just do something so I can watch it later. That would be great.
Okay.
We're the generation that still tapes things.
Well, like, not videotape, but like, just have it recorded, so you can still hear the material.
I still say tape, and I work in a digital recording studio, so it's, you know... There isn't a tape machine to be found.
All righty. And 6B, future agenda items. Anything to announce and give us a heads up on?
One of the commission... Chair and members of the commission, one of the items that came up at the last training workshop was where to put public comment, and we're suggesting, and I think from some feedback we got from a few commissioners, was to move public comment to the beginning of the meeting rather than at the end of the meeting, like we have now, on the agenda. Not have it at both places. We don't have it at both places, but we're suggesting it be at the front of the meeting. So, then, when we have an item, an old business or new business, it'd be, once again, it'd be the commissioners, chairs prerogative, whether they want to invite public comment for each item on the agenda, but have public comment at the very beginning rather than at the end.
So, if I'm interpreting what you're saying correctly, the... What is typically agendaized is call to the public slash commission response. We have moved that earlier in the agenda?
Yes, the beginning of the meeting rather than the end of the meeting.
I don't have any problem with that.
Yeah, and I think I had raised that so that the... If we are voting on a topic and the public was attending, that they get to speak before we vote, because it's kind of annoying if we already vote and we didn't hear from them. Now, I do want to say, if you do attend the... Or just speak with Lisa about the commissioner training chair, what was very interesting to me that I learned is that you have a lot of authority to invite the public to speak at any point, so it may or may not be necessary to move the public... Call to the public to the beginning. If we're voting on... We're discussing an issue, and it has public concern, you may invite the public at any time to speak.
Yeah, and I don't mind if this is put on the agenda earlier, because it's... There might be a situation where, because of the nature of the meeting and the timeliness of things, someone would like to stand up and say, hey, thumbs up, thumbs down, here are my reasons, and I've got to go. My babysitter's only good for 30 minutes or something, versus keeping them there for a meeting that was thought to be an hour long, that's going to be dragging on to maybe a couple hours or something like that, so...
And if we want to switch it back at any time, we can do so.
And as counselled by the vice chair here, we still retain the opportunity to invite the public to speak on any item, so...
As for future agenda items, next meeting, we will be bringing the Roadrunner Storage Facility on Franklin and Hunt Highway, as that's coming to its end of staff review. So, it'll be coming here probably in the next meeting. That's it.
That's it, okay. Call to the public. And we do have someone from the public here this evening, so I'll read this. "Call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Individual commission members may respond to criticisms made, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the commission shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action." With that said, is there anyone that would like to speak this evening? Okay, thank you. Call to the commission. Current events. Commission members, any thoughts on future agenda items that you'd like to have or events that you'd like to announce?
I do want to... I would like to point out, and if I embarrass her, I apologize, but was the last council meeting, or was the one meeting before that where you were...
It was the September 5 meeting, I think.
I was watching that from home, and Maricela was featured and congratulated, and as should be, she got her masters, right? Yeah, she finished her masters, and she is our personal rock star, so I think we should acknowledge that.
Awesome.
Of course, she doesn't have a demanding job taking any of her time.
No, yeah. It's not like she has to deal with, you know, us.
I have a question. What's happening with the storage facility coming in on the 79 from the south end of town? Have we heard from that gentleman, or...
So, since it was tabled by council for ADOT permission, he has said he wanted to continue with the project, but he does... He is waiting for ADOT's approvals on stuff. So, that's... That may be a while.
And then, I just... I want to just thank you again. I think this proactive planning is terrific, and I think it's going to go a long ways as we progress and progress with the town, and I think it's going to make a clearer case for the council.
And vice chair, I think you had an agenda item that you would... Or a discussion at some point in time that you'd like to have about agricultural versus solar farms and how they can be...
Well, the agrivoltaics, I don't know that we're zoned for that, right? So, that would be where you have solar panels tractor height off the ground, and you also grow your crops, so you can do the best of both worlds, and it also preserves water. And I don't know if that's included in any of our zoning planning, because it's kind of a new thing.
So, did...
I don't want to see all of our farms turn into just solar fields, right? Somebody's got to grow something.
So, does staff, did you get a sense of... Maybe you bring back some thoughts to us on that at some point in time?
Yeah, we can bring thoughts back on that. We've had someone ask about it before, so this will be a good jump-off point.
Then, I had a couple of things. One, and it was brought up this evening, the necessity of parking. When we were going through the general plan process, we kind of skipped over with the promise that we would come back and look at parking in the downtown area, because if we want to attract good business, we've got to have parking, and we need to plan for that now, or it'll get away from us really quick. So, I just would like an update of where we're at on that, what the future holds. And then, the other one that I'd like staff to look at at some point in time is... And this is... For service stations that come in, my personal preference, having seen it done both ways, is that they do their drive area and other areas all concrete, versus the combination of concrete under the bays and asphalt in other places, because the asphalt, after a short amount of time, really gets to looking really poor in it. And when you go out and compare the facilities, there's a definite difference. So, just take that for staff consideration, and then we'll discuss that some other time as well. With that, I think I'd entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to adjourn. I have a second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Ben Capalongo, and a second by Commissioner Vanderstark to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous.